I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mia Caulfield?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Fattacante?
Here.
Seven present.
At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to support the minutes of the last meeting and place them on file. Moved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, the minutes of the last meeting have been accepted and recorded. And we want to accept the minutes that were amended for the January 23rd meeting. Moved to accept those minutes by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor? Yes, Ms. Fattacante?
Your Honor, we do have a change in the minutes, and that was for the information that we got regarding the motions that are currently in the queue. On the last page, the last one that is highlighted in yellow, that motion, Your Honor, failed. And it does say that it passed. We want to make sure that that was your motion, Mr. Leary? It did fail.
Is that the January 23rd meeting?
We got a packet, Your Honor, of motions that are in the queue, waiting for reports. The last motion, on the last page, which is this quarterly report, on page nine, regarding the superintendent search, a motion placed on the agenda on 2608. It should say, "School Committee Denied." So I make a motion that we refer, that we change that to "School Committee Denied," Your Honor. Last motion, last page.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Doherty. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Signified by saying aye.
Thank you, Your Honor.
The, it's right here. So we'll just make that correction on the motion reports.
Just make the correction, that's all, Your Honor, yes.
Yes, under reports, right?
Yes.
We accepted both copies of the minutes of January 23rd and February 6th.
Pardon me, Mayor, just real quick, I apologize. I just noticed something too while you were bringing that up regarding this. I didn't know this was actually part of these minutes. But, and maybe I missed this, or maybe this will be forthcoming, but there's on page six, extended time grant, a motion that I had. There was report, that says, "Report provided, February 6th, '08, to discuss during UTL negotiations and executive session." Maybe because the executive session was, I think it was canceled for whatever reason. Is the report going to be coming at that particular meeting? Or is there a report that I simply don't have?
I think it's a report through you, Your Honor. We did not have that meeting, and therefore, we did not get that report.
Okay, so we wouldn't get it earlier in advance then? Okay, thank you, that's fine, thanks.
Okay.
And, Your Honor, would you like to tell everybody why we're wearing these white ribbons?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Ms. Fattacante. Last Thursday, Valentine's Day, Mayor Lynch and I had a press conference in the lobby of City Hall. And Counselor Martin was there, former mayor, and school committee member. Leahy and school committee member Conway was there. And the purpose of the meeting was to show our support for women who are against domestic violence. And this started in Canada seventeen years ago by just a handful of men. And it is now a worldwide event every year. So I'm proud to wear this white ribbon, I think every man is. And I'm happy that everyone in this council chambers tonight, in the school committee chambers, is also wearing a white ribbon. And as Police Chief Ken LaBelle stated, that it is unacceptable, not only in Lowell, but in the state and the country. Now it's in the world. It's a worldwide event, so. I appreciate everyone wearing that white ribbon.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Permission to enter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are two items for permission to enter this evening. First one is CMG Sangus Arena for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Funding will be to provide for the rental of ice time for practices and games for the Lowell High School hockey program. Funding will be provided by the Lowell High Athletic Department budget. Second one is to the city of Springfield for thirteen thousand, twenty dollars, to amend the existing contract to provide for the out-of-district additional cost for one student enrolled in receiving services outlined in their special education, individual educational plan. Funding provided by a special education department budget, special education tuition account.
Any discussion on the issues? Yes, Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. On the first item, could we, would it be possible just to get a report from the athletic director on the increase over the last three years of that? It doesn't seem out of the norm, but I'd just like to, it does seem like it's creeping up. So I'm just curious on how the rental at the arena, the price of it over the last three years.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Moving on with the agenda, under memorials, by Regina M. Fattacante. A moment of silence with dock and chambers for Patrick Amicave Sr., retired low deputy fire chief, father of Deputy Chief Patrick Amicave Jr., Lieutenant Stephen McCabe, retired firefighter, Robert McCabe, and grandfather of Mary Kate Gil Amos Mori, school teacher. Also by Jackie Doherty, a moment of silence with dock and chambers for Peter P. Rogers, husband of Donna Rogers, Rogers Middle School teacher. Let us all stand in a moment of silence with dock and chambers, please.
Thank you, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Can't do it all the way, they go on again.
Any public participation? No public participation? We'll move on with the agenda on the motions. Motions by Ms. Martin. Request that the superintendent prepare a report on the recent kindergarten visitation day, hosted by the Lowell Public Schools. Specific areas of interest would include how the event was publicized, how each individual school prepared for the event, the general reaction of parents and teachers, and any plans for increasing the number of families participating, and the general effectiveness of this event. Seconded by Mr. Leary. On the motion?
Thank you very much. Just to give a sense, I did speak with a couple different parents who had, I think, fairly different experiences with visitation day. And I really would just like to make sure that this is something that's happening district-wide, that all of our kindergarten classrooms are prepared, and to be quite honest, are aware that this is going on. Again, you know, having spoken with some parents, there were, I have real concerns that when they arrived to, for visitation day, classrooms were on field trips. So there was no class to observe. That some of the school staff didn't even seem to know that the event was going on. And I think that this is one of the critical ways that our families have an opportunity to really see our classrooms in action, to see the extraordinary work that goes on at the kindergarten level when we're really welcoming so many students into our district. And I think it's a lost opportunity. So that's really kind of the genesis of the motion for me. I would like to see a report back, just in terms of how we're going to better prepare and really make this more of a, more of an event that has real impact for our families in the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Any other discussions on this particular motion, which is a great motion? And how would we publicize that through letters and send it home to the children and so forth? Okay. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Once again, it was a great motion. Motion by David Conway, to have a commencement speaker at Lowell High School graduation, and that speaker be chosen by the headmaster and his distinguished alumni committee each year from the list of distinguished alumni award recipients. Seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Fattacante, on the motion. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For a number of years, when we would be at meetings at the high school, quite often, especially around graduation, the idea of bringing in a speaker to talk to the graduating class at commencement exercises was something that was very common. And yet, there were two problems that came up each and every time, and that was, number one, if we brought in a, an individual that would, let's say, be perceived as someone that would be famous, someone perhaps that has, is known through the news world, what would end up happening is that this individual would not have a connection with the students at Lowell High School. And the second problem that we would run into was the cost factor. And that, I think, was the determining factor that would be anywhere from a thousand to, let's say, to two thousand, or perhaps even more. And what I thought we might be able to do was to tap into the resources of the distinguished alumni. And I think that if anybody's had the distinct pleasure of going to one of these ceremonies, which I did last, a couple months ago, it was, it was quite, it was quite an amazing situation because to listen to the stories of these individuals and the successes that they have had in their life, and yet, and they were graduates of Lowell High School. So I thought this would, might be an excellent idea to bring one of these people forward at commencement exercises. And I've talked to the headmaster concerning this situation. He agreed with the motion. And I did say to him, I said, "Can we guarantee that we will not have an extended time for our graduation?" And he said, "There would be no problem at all." So I'm assuming that we'll, he'll probably cut some of his words of wisdoms. You know, I'm sure we can live with that. And I think that this motion here, I certainly hope that you back me up on this. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I'd like to say, I think it's a great idea to have speakers come in for commencement, but I'm not sure, I guess my question is the cost factor then. So is your motion to have it be through the alumni group so that there wouldn't be a cost? Or is there going to be, if there is a cost, would it come back before the committee? Or how, I'm unclear about the cost piece of it.
It would be, if I may, Mr. Mayor? It would, it would be of no cost. And as I talked to the headmaster, and he said that I'm sure that the members of the distinguished alumni would be more than willing to come and speak to their, you know, to speak at their alumni. So I, it wouldn't be of any cost at all, as far as I, as far as I can see.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I think it's a great motion too. But I just want to make sure too, what if a situation arises through you, Mayor, to the maker of the motion? What if an occasion arises where we couldn't get one of the five? Then would it go to some sort of committee, or would it be up to the high school? Well, at this particular point, we have, I believe it's either the fourth or the fifth year that we have, we have awarded this distinguished alumni award recipients. And so in other words, we do have a number of people that are already available. And each year, we will also have an additional, I believe it's four, I think it's five, five additional. So I don't think that we will have a problem with our feeder system as far as speakers are concerned. Thank you. I think it's a great motion. It's very good, it's, wish you, thank you.
Anyone else like to, Ms. Martin?
I think my only concern on this is that, I think that we'd be looking at, as Mr. Conway has mentioned, in any given year, generally, three out of the five are living fairly local individuals. And I don't know if in his discussions already, previously with the headmaster, they've already determined what the process would be for final selection. You know, certainly, we have gone to great lengths to honor these individuals, certainly deservedly so. I mean, they're individuals who have given enormously to their communities. And I just, it's difficult for me to imagine how we pick one.
Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. I commend Mr. Conway in this motion. It is, to me, having a distinguished alumni from the high school who now has become a famous person, Ted Leonsis, let's say. He could probably pay for his plane ticket to come back to Lowell. And he probably would come back free of charge, knowing that this is the place where he got his start. If not for Lowell High School, he would not be, he would not own a sports team, and he would not, he would not own the technology world. I think we can probably work out the details through the headmaster's office. It's, it will be difficult to pick one. But I think that we could probably make the first selection criteria is, how about the students of that year get to select their, their choice? I mean, that might be a way to do it. Every year, we pick a group of five individuals for the distinguished alumni, and out of that pool, students might be able to vote. I know that they have a graduating committee that selects speakers and determines what they'll do on graduation day. So maybe that pool of youngsters will select one of the individuals as a first choice and a second choice to be the graduation speaker. I just think it is, it will be wonderful for young people to recognize that there are no limits, and there are absolutely no barriers. And Ted Leonsis told the best story. He was told by a teacher, whose name I will not repeat here, that, from the high school, that he'd never amount to anything. And when she heard he was coming to Lowell High School, he was a distinguished alumni, she picked up the phone and she called Mr. Samaras, and she said, "I'd like to have Mr. Leonsis visit me, because I'd like to apologize to him." And he told the story, and it was a fabulous story. And I can see stories like that coming out at graduation. And I just think that it's a great opportunity for our high school students to recognize that, man, oh man, the sky is the limit. The sky is the limit. And these twenty people are now living examples of the sky is the limit. So it's a great opportunity for our kids to, to hear from the past of what their future can be. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Just to clarify something, the, when I talked to the headmaster, we thought it would be a good idea that not just himself, but also the distinguished alumni committee that does the research and actually picks the recipients, that they would be the ones that would sit down and make that decision, with obviously, the headmasters finding okay. And I think the whole idea of, of having input from students, I think, might be, might be a great idea too. And I, and I'm sure that the headmaster would welcome that.
I would just like to briefly offer my comments. I've attended many of the distinguished alumni events at Lowell High School. And I'd never been disappointed at one of them, none of them. And at the last distinguished alumni event, I spoke with Rosalind Elias. And this is what she told me. She said, "I'd give anything to sing one more song on that stage." And there's a woman who traveled the world, was the best in her business, was a fabulous opera singer. And she was told she wasn't good enough to make the glee club. But one teacher said, "Yes, you will." And this is an inspiring motion. This is a motion that will inspire students to move forward. And as everyone has indicated, there's no roadblocks in front of you. So this is an excellent motion. And I listened to the words of wisdom from Judge Duncan and Kendall Wallace, Judge Baracus. I can go on and on and on. People who not only made a difference in their lives, but they made a difference in other people's lives. So this is a good motion, where seven hundred-plus students who are graduating say, "They made it, so can I." So this is, I want to compliment you, Dave, on this motion.
Thank you.
Excellent motion. All in favor of the motion? Signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next motion. By James Leary. Instruct the superintendent to initiate immediately Operation Task Force Retention for the purposes of examining the district's dropout rate, kindergarten through the 12th grade, and to recommend a plan of action for increasing student retention. The retention, let me see. Operation Task Force will examine our current programs in order to determine if they are effective, make recommendations for potential actions needed, along with recommended target goals to be achieved, which will be presented to the curriculum subcommittee and the superintendent by March 31st, 2008. The task force members will include Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy as chairperson, Lowell High School headmaster William Samaras, designee Lowell High School guidance counselor, designee Lowell High School teacher, designee middle school principal, designee middle school guidance counselor, designee middle school teacher, designee elementary school principal, designee elementary school teacher, and designee attendance officer. The designees will be all determined by the superintendent. On the motion, Mr. Leary. Who seconded the motion? By Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Just, I guess, the general premise here is that everyone I ever spoke to really comes out and says, "The most important thing that you have to achieve is getting students in the classroom and keeping them in the classroom." It's said a variety of different ways. From the Badger Galupo Forum, right up through on the floor here at the Lowell School Committee. I've never heard anyone suggest that not keeping kids in class was not, was not important. It wasn't actually the most important initial goal a school system should try to achieve. Our dropout rate, right as it speaks of the last measurement, as per the Massachusetts Education Board, is 5.6 percent. State average is 3.3. A similar schools, not a similar school system, a school system in Western Mass, Westfield, Westfield, Massachusetts in particular, their high school had a, school system had a 4.6 dropout rate. They initiated a similar task force at the end of January to address that because they thought that was actually a crisis. With ours being at 5.6, I would, I would really suggest that it's more imperative in an urban setting. It's also, take a look at the programs that we have in place. Not to say that folks aren't working really hard, or that they haven't had an impact, but we really have a short amount of money and, and an important task to achieve. We want to make sure that the programs that are in place are actually the most effective possible. The dates that I put in here are March 31st, 2008. We could easily move that to April 30th of 2008. The goal to do it this quick reflects, one, that this is, one of the most, this is probably the most important thing we do, getting people in the room to learn, to learn. And two, we have a budget year coming up, and I don't know what the recommendations would come from this task force. It might involve money, and we may have to make decisions. The key word here is recommendations. It's not to say that what this task force provides is going to be the new edict for the school system. They would thoroughly come before the school committee and also the superintendent. So I think this, this is a very timely motion. It's something that we've struggled with since I've been on, and I know long before I came to the school committee. We've had some successes, but we really don't have measurements to say, "This is the best we can get." And if the state average is 3.3, we obviously can do a little better. Now, comparing it to urban schools, let me just end with this. Compared to urban schools, we're doing pretty good. We're probably the third-best urban school in the, in the state right now. And the ones, I think it's Haverhill and Lynn are not too far away from us. I don't want to compare ourselves to urban schools when the state average is 3.3. We all know, getting a child or a young adolescent teenager into the classroom is the number-one goal. Listen to our, listening to our folks in the classroom and in administrative positions in the schools, provide recommendations can only help and add to, will be an overall benefit. Thank you.
Any discussion? Ms. Fattacante?
Very much. This is a timely motion, and it's extremely important. But let me make this suggestion to my colleagues. We're getting a new superintendent. And I would think that one of the things that our new superintendent is going to need to become prized of is the dropout rate, and the issues that are specific to Lowell. And the new superintendent will be the person to actually carry out the plan. And I'm thinking that we want to include that new superintendent in this process. I think to, to create a plan without that person on board is, is not, is not the right step that I want to take. I think that we need to wait until we have a new superintendent on board because that new person is going to be driving every other department into working towards stopping the dropout rate. And unless that person knows the plan and has been a stakeholder in the plan and has been a formulator of the plan, I think it will be a little bit more difficult. I agree with Mr. Leary a hundred percent. We have a problem, we need to fix it. But since our superintendent is going to be the person who's going to be driving every single thing behind this plan, behind Mr. Leary's motion, I think the, I think the new superintendent, this should fall on their responsibility. Our current superintendent will be leaving in June. And so whatever plan we may have formulated, the new superintendent may look at that and say, "I don't think that's the way I want to go." And I don't want that to happen. I don't want us to start something and then halfway through, the new superintendent says, "Hey, look, I have a better idea. I'm going to, I'm going to bring this idea in from the school district that I came, that I came from." So I'm wondering if Mr. Leary would consent to waiting until we have a new superintendent and then put this on, as a responsibility of the new superintendent? Because truly, this is something that the new superintendent will have to adopt from A to Z. And, and buy into from A to Z. And our, and our current superintendent will be going in, in, in June. And I would hate to see that the locus, or the person who drives this doesn't understand where the car is because they have not been a part of the planning. I'm wondering if we can possibly wait and then, and bring this up with our new superintendent. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this, this motion certainly does have merit. When I, when I read the motion, it certainly, it certainly rings a bell. And that is professional development. We had a program in our, our professional development that was during our leadership, that was run by the university. And what we would do is we would discuss issues, not just retention, but also curriculum, attendance, discipline, and a whole host of other situations in the school system. And what we did was, we had leaders from the three levels of education, pre-K through four, five through eight, nine through 12, which I think that Mr. Leary is explaining here. And one of the problems that we've had in recent years is that nine through 12 is in isolation at this particular time, which to me, does not make a lot of sense because I think you need the three levels of education working together in order to solve these problems. Because each month that goes by, we have one level of education that does not know what the other one is talking about. And at this, at this point, it's my understanding we have pre-K through eight that is working together, but once again, nine through 12 is isolated. When we had the professional development, when it was headed up by the university, I don't think we had these problems, to be quite frank with you. Not that we didn't have, we didn't have curriculum problems, we didn't have retention problems, but at least we could sit down and discuss these with the three levels. And I hope that, I hope that down the road, we certainly get back to that type of a system where everyone is working on the same page. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Martin?
Martin. I think that, a few different things I think to react to. And I guess first and foremost, I would say that I think it's true what Mr. Leary has said is that this is an issue that we have all struggled with for many years now. I think particularly at the high school, where retention is such a profound and grave problem. And I also have to echo the sentiments just expressed by, by Mr. Conway. The high school has certainly been segregated and has certainly not been part of overall district, district-wide improvements or engaged in those processes. And I think that they can certainly, all, the entire district benefits when there is the capacity for the entire district to work together and not to segment efforts. And I think that certainly, you know, again, and we've talked about the EQA report articulating so very clearly, and we'll be talking about it actually coming up in the curriculum minutes as well, that there is this seeming break between the articulation of curriculum imperatives and other programmatic and institutional initiatives that are really in line with each other when we look at our, you know, K through, K through eight, and yet are not seemingly able to make the leap to the ninth grade and the high school, which I think is going to be a huge, a huge barrier that this committee and the leadership and administration in the Lowell Public Schools needs to address in a very dramatic way. The concerns that Ms. Fattacante has brought up, I can understand. I certainly understand the idea that this is going to be one of the key I certainly understand the idea that this is going to be one of the key things that we charge our superintendent with, our incoming superintendent, whoever he or she may be. But I do think that we would benefit from having some groundwork done. And I think the idea of bringing together, you know, certainly, we talk a great deal about wanting to have the input from our frontline staff, from the individuals who are working with students, working with parents, working with the community agencies that support our efforts. I think having those people in a room to talk about specifically the issues that surround retention, I think could be of great value to us as a committee, and I think perhaps really most importantly, to an incoming superintendent. To have this as, certainly not, you know, the answer to all of the questions, but to have at least begun the dialogue, the process of discussing what works and what doesn't work in our district. Anyone who's charged with this task at the superintendent level is going to be really dependent on the work and the expertise and the talent of the people who do this work at the administrative level, as well as at the, again, classroom level. So I think, I can't see any negative in at least beginning a process so that a superintendent can come in, again, whoever they are, and be able to have at least an institutional entity in place that they would be able to plug into, to, I hope, speed up the process of, you know, familiarizing themselves with a district-wide initiative.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, and I agree with what Ms. Martin just stated, and I acknowledge Ms. Fattacani has an interesting point regarding, you're going to have a new chief administrative officer coming in. I think the key here, too, that, you know, I wrote like a paragraph of information, so I could have wrote a book regarding how my thoughts revolved around it. The task force are all very fluid. There's going to be recommendations that we're going to agree upon that can easily be implemented immediately. There's going to be recommendations that we're all going to disagree with and not implement. There's going to be recommendations that a new superintendent coming in would disagree with and agree with. It's an ongoing, if you will, if you look at the title, it's Operation Task Force Retention. I put that in as a joke, because it's kind of, you know, this is kind of a crises, and this is kind of like a battle. Battles are fluid. They're never, it will continue to evolve. Someone new coming in with different perspective will bring additional changes to whatever we begin. Business, schools, it's all very fluid. It doesn't stay stagnant, doesn't wait. Kids are leaving every year. We need to do something, at least open up the dialogue to begin to change that. It's imperative that we're successful with it. I, you know, I said March 31, 2008. I can say probably that might be of a challenge to some people. We can move the first report as of April 30. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but let's say the end of April. Have an initial report and initial recommendations. This isn't going to end after the budget year. It's going to go on next year, it's going to go on the next year after that. Whoever's sitting on this committee 10 years from now is going to have to keep dealing with this. They're going to have to keep going back to the drawing board. But I think this is one area where we can start to attack the problem and see positive results. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Briefly, I'd just like to say, I understand my colleague's concern that in four months we'll be getting a new superintendent, but I also feel this sense of urgency, that we are trying to tackle this issue. It does seem to be specifically concentrated at the high school. So what appeals to me about my colleague's motion is this idea of getting these people together, K to 12, with this focus on retention, and the idea, as was spoken earlier, that we get some recommendations in place to start the process, or, no, I don't want to say start the process, because I think we have been working on this issue for years, but to maybe fine-tune the process a little bit by getting some players from K to 12, sitting around a table, discussing it and making recommendations. So I think it's a good starting point, and as we mentioned earlier, with the new superintendent coming in, there's, that he or she is going to have a huge amount to learn and take in. And this would just be one set of recommendations that can be looked at and further fine-tuned as needed. So I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
I just want to say very briefly that basically this material is already taking place. These talks are happening on a regular basis with K through eight, pre-K through eight. As I said before, the only problem that we have now is that nine through 12 has been isolated. If you bring nine through 12 to the table, then that's what professional development is all about, and it's done on a regular basis, and they deal with retention. So I don't know if this is, I don't know if we're duplicating, if we're duplicating our process here, when in reality, it's already in place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just quickly, I won't be long. I don't know what we're duplicating. I don't know if any programs coming out K through eight. I acknowledge what Mr. Conway said earlier was pretty important, that everybody should be talking. You know, you can vote it up or down. I don't want to be stagnant. I want to move forward. I want to be successful. This is one area, at the bare minimum, folks are going to get together and explain where their problems are. If nothing else results from that, at least people got together and discussed these issues. This is a simple motion that's really well-worded, thank you, and it's also very long. I mean, my whole, my bottom line here, it's fluid. It isn't something that's going to be in concrete.
Okay. Mr. Lahey?
Thank you. I'm just a little confused by some of the comments also that, and with no disrespect, I just don't understand what you mean by the high school's isolated by conversation. We've all been bringing this up for years, and I remember a few years back, you know, it's probably normal for our district, but when we have 1,200 kids come in as freshmen and we graduate 750, there's a problem, and we should have, we should already be doing this. So I don't understand what you mean by the high school's isolated. We should already be, we should always be talking about this. I think what Mr. Leary's doing is just trying to maybe formalize it and really get some action on it. Thank you.
You know, not, not...
Let me say a few words.
Okay.
The intent of the motion is good, and the motion is to set in place a dialogue, something to create a foundation. And Superintendent Carla Brooks-Beer is not here this evening, as everyone can realize, she's on vacation, but she recommended that the motion be referred to the curriculum subcommittee. So to compromise, I can count, and the motion's a good motion, to compromise, why don't we just defer this to the curriculum subcommittee and let a dialogue start? And when the new superintendent comes on board, at least there might be a little foundation there that that new superintendent can work with, and at least we have a path to go down. Does that make sense?
I'll make a substitute motion, Your Honor, to refer this to the curriculum subcommittee.
I'll second it. Second it? By Mr. Conway?
Second it.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Is everyone content with the motion? Oh, you're not, okay, Ms., okay. Take a roll call on the motion.
I'll refer to the curriculum subcommittee. Mr. Lahey?
No.
Mr. Larry?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacanti?
Yes.
Substitute motion carries. The motion will be referred to the curriculum subcommittee. At least there'll be dialogue and a foundation to start with this issue, and it's a very important one. I think we all agree for that. Okay. Moving on with the agenda. Motion by Jackie Dougherty. Request the superintendent provide a report to the Lowell High School Subcommittee on the non-athletic school-sponsored clubs currently offered to students, including a breakdown of number of students participating in the faculty stipend awarded for each organization, seconded by, Mr. Conway, on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. We have hundreds of students involved in many clubs at the high school, and I'm just looking for a report to kind of update us on what those clubs are and what kind of student involvement we have in those organizations. I think it is one of the great strengths at Lowell High School, is that we do have so many clubs and organizations for our students. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signified by S.A. and I. Any opposed? The motion carries. Motion, the last motion of the evening, by James Leary. Request the superintendent provide a report pertaining to all the daily middle school doors. The report should include the current working status for each door, along with financial and operational recommendations to fix or replace doors which do not work or provide the intended usage required for middle school, seconded by Ms. Martin. On the motion.
The motion speaks for itself. Mr. Lang is already working on this. I appreciate the support. Thank you.
I just briefly, that daily middle school was renovated, refurbished, just eight years ago, maybe, 10 years ago? And I'd like to see that report when that comes back, if there's doors that aren't functioning properly and so forth. So, okay. All in favor of the motion, signified by S.A. and I. Any opposed? The motion carries. Subcommittee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee report by Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. The curriculum instruction Subcommittee did meet on February 11. In attendance were myself and Jackie Dougherty. Also from the school committee were Mr. John Lahey from Central Office. We had Jean Franco, our Deputy Superintendent, and Jim Neary, who is the School Improvement Coordinator for the district. There were a number of different topics that we discussed. First and foremost really was the school improvement initiatives. We are in a process right now that, here in the district, the city of Lowell, we do have five schools that have been categorized as Commonwealth Priority Schools, really just a difference in nomenclature. These are the underperforming schools based on MCAS performance. These schools who now fall into this category really do find themselves in a situation where they have a great deal of work to do in terms of their school improvement plans, and the district as a whole is really working very hard to support them in that process. It is a DOE mandated process that they will go through in terms of developing the data that's going to guide the improvements and really creating the documents that are going to institutionalize the improvements that are mandated. So, you know, they're great, it's in typical DOE fashion, it is broken down into a myriad of different subsets, but I think some of the key things for us to remember and be aware of is that the state has adopted 10 essential conditions, which is really critical for school improvement, and that is really, I think, what guides the, this entire school improvement initiative. And really, as we look at the many, many schools who are facing this, for the city of Lowell, at least, we can say, school improvement and the process of developing these plans is something that has been in place for many years, and I think our teachers and our administrators are familiar with it. This is, I think, a more urgent kind of approach, which I think is certainly warranted, and I think that with Ms. Franco and Ms. Neary leading this and really taking a leadership role across the, all the different underperforming schools, I'm hoping that we are going to see some significant changes. There are a great many details, and I would ask Deputy Superintendent Franco if she'd like to share any key points, just to make sure that the facts are out there.
Ms. Martin, I did you, I thought you did an excellent job taking a lot of DOE documentation and making it understandable to the general public. We are, in fact, looking specifically at improvement for each particular building. We're, I've gone to each of the Commonwealth Priority Schools. As a matter of fact, not all of them yet. I've gone to see classrooms, but I'm speaking to the staff at each particular building just to ensure that the language that all of our staff people here is consistent, and actually working with Mr. Georges and Michael Earl and making sure that our message is consistent to our staff, because we need to improve in our staff, working along with us diligently to make the best progress possible. So in this process, we're writing a plan that's in conjunction with schools. Teachers know about it. Teachers are being surveyed, administrators are being surveyed, so public opinion is actually shared. So there are tools in place throughout the process, but we want to make sure that the process is clear, because our schools and our teachers need to know about the process as we go through it, so that's really important. Department of Education has changed their manners, their way of doing business a little bit. Before, we all used to have to go to Malden. They're coming to us. They have been more collaborative. They'll be involved in working on, at onsite with us. So we just want to make sure that the process is open and respectful and as much as a key learning experience as it possibly can be with all of our staff to get to make the gains. We all have the same goal, teachers, administrators, children, parents, we want the best outcomes we can for kids. So our planning is, we're trying to make it as transparent as possible. So I don't know if that clarifies it at all, but we're in the, we're on the improvement train, absolutely.
Excellent. And I think it also tells us, because this is going to be something we're talking about. You know, as this process continues, the curriculum instruction Subcommittee will continue to monitor progress, and it is something, again, in terms of transparency, that we're going to be sharing, you know, at every opportunity. So that was, that was one topic that we discussed at the meeting. Secondly, we did get an update on the adolescent literacy study. This really has been an initiative that Ms. Franco has spearheaded, and it really is an idea of bringing together instructional specialists, basically who are working at the middle school and with middle school principals, to talk about the importance of adolescent literacy, this age group, that middle school age group in terms of their reading and comprehension. And it really is just kind of a, right now, we're currently in process, but we are expecting to receive some kind of proposed next steps for moving forward. I think it's going to be critically important that we do receive that information prior to budget season, because if there are specific investments that need to be made, it's going to be something that this committee is going to need to be aware of in appropriate timeframe. We discussed the elementary curriculum development for English language learners. For many of the students in our district know, and our teachers certainly, Reading Street is the district's reading program that we use across the district at the elementary school. Because of the specific needs of our English language learners, we have brought together those instructors, those teachers with that expertise, to really try and determine what ancillary materials, curriculum materials, we want to have on hand to really enhance what Reading Street is providing for our students, recognizing that with English language learners, there are some additional needs that need to be addressed. And I think by augmenting the Reading Street program, we're going to be able to ensure that the gaps in service for these students are filled effectively. We also, final topic was physical education, health curriculum update. The information that was shared with us is that there is a process underway right now, and I believe our acting athletic director is involved with this process of bringing together some of our physical education instructors to discuss the district's curriculum for phys ed and health, and to ensure that we are seeing some, in addition to the kind of specific topics included, we also may be able to find some crossover with our traditional subject areas as well, and really put in place what it would appear for the first time would be a district-wide curriculum structure for phys ed and health, to ensure that these important topics are getting covered appropriately throughout the district. I would submit that as a report of progress, and I would encourage Ms. Dougherty and Mr. Lahey, anyone else who was in attendance, to fill in where I might have missed. Thank you.
Would anyone like to discuss the report? Ms. Martin, it was an excellent report, and you really got a lot done in one hour, I'll tell you. Excellent report. Motion to accept the report, as reported by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fattacani. All in favor of accepting the report, placing the file, signified by S.A. and I. The report has been accepted. Transportation Subcommittee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Transportation Subcommittee met, and the members present were Ms. Martin and Ms. Dougherty, and also school committee member John Lahey was in attendance, School Department Personnel Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang, and John Dakota, our Transportation Coordinator. Your Honor, you will see that in this, in this report, there are several policy changes that we're looking for the committee to make, so I will point those out when we get to that, when we get to those sections. The first was a crosswalk traffic flow issue, brought up by myself and Mr. Lahey. Request that the Safety Subcommittee of the Lowell School Committee have a joint meeting with the City Council Safety Subcommittee and discuss some concerns. What will happen, Your Honor, is that Mr. Dakota will review some of the concerns that have been brought up by members of this committee, and will, in fact, bring that, bring those concerns to City Hall. If, and if, if it's so, if it's so needed, then the two Safety Subcommittees will get together. But we first thought that we would allow Mr. Dakota the opportunity to, in fact, to resolve some of the issues first. The second issue was an issue of crossing guards, brought up by my colleague Ms. Dougherty. Request the superintendent provide a report regarding the crossing guards. Now, Your Honor, what we learned at the meeting was the crossing guards, Mr. Dakota has requested an additional crossing guard from Mr. Corcoran. Apparently, it's not in the budget to have an additional crossing guard. However, what Mr. Dakota did bring up was that there is a crossing guard, Your Honor, that currently crosses less than a dozen students, and Mr. Dakota will, in fact, speak with Mr. Corcoran to... with Mr. Corcoran to see if we can reassign that particular crossing guard to an intersection where there are far more many students than the dozen. So, we're going to see if we can resolve that issue that way. The Bailey Safety Traffic Issues, brought up by my colleague Mr. Leahy, that the Superintendent provide an update on vehicle and foot traffic in the neighborhoods of the Bailey and the Daily School. Mr. Dakota reported that the city is applying for CDBG funding to get some of the, to offset some of the costs to put in some sidewalks there, Your Honor, and I know you have been very personally involved in that. By, a motion by Ms. Martin, my colleague Ms. Martin was brought up, request that the Superintendent provide a report to the Transportation Subcommittee outlining staff reporting procedures. What had happened, Your Honor, is members of this committee were contacted by a bus driver. Ms. Martin had some concern that there were not appropriate measures to report incidents and issues. What we learned from Mr. Dakota was a far clearer way of reporting issues. Mr. Dakota explained the protocol that should be followed by Lowell Public School staff, as well as transportation vendors. Any questions and suggestions, go to the vendor, and then it will be bumped up to the Transportation Coordinator of the Lowell Public Schools. Now, the next one, Your Honor, is an issue where we have a change in policy. I had a motion on the agenda. I wanted us to sit down as a Transportation Subcommittee and then have a discussion as a full school committee about what we were going to do regarding early release. If you remember, Your Honor, we had had a horrible storm, and everybody remembers, because they were stuck for seven hours in the car. And one of the concerns that parents had was that they wanted their children to be released early from school. The Transportation Subcommittee talked about this, and one of the things that we talked about was, and Ms. Doherty and Ms. Martin both brought it up, our children from K to eight, sometimes, in lots of issues, we have working families, and parents are not able to be home. So, if we were to let out little Johnny at 10 o'clock, how, where is little Johnny going to go? Parents aren't able to get home, and the reality is, Your Honor, if parents are stuck in the snow, the best place for the student to be is in the protective environment of the classroom. However, Your Honor, we did decide to make a policy change. If you notice at the bottom, a motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, to allow for the early release of high school students, grades nine through 12, after school, has begun, due to inclement weather, which deemed to be in the best interest of student and public safety by the Superintendent of Schools. That was approved, Your Honor, on a three to zero vote. That would require a policy change of the Lowell School Committee. One of the other issues, Your Honor, that we talked about regarding releasing high school students, is that many of them have siblings which are in K to eight. So, if high school students get to get home, then when K to eight students get to be released, there will be somebody there at the house to let them in, number one, and to be there when their, when parents have not yet been able to get home, in regards to inclement weather.
Good point.
So, Your Honor, we might want to take that vote now, before I go on with the rest of the transportation agenda. So, I would make a motion that we have a policy change here, and that the policy would be that we would, based upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, we would have early release for high school students only, Your Honor.
Seconded by Ms. Doherty. Will we take a roll call?
We would need a roll call, it's a policy change, Your Honor, you're right.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Coffield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yays, passes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me pick up with item number six. Item number six was actually referred to in item number two, so we can pass to seven. During the Student Advisory Council, Your Honor, several issues were brought up by Lowell High School students. One of them was the overcrowdedness of the afternoon buses to Pawtucketville. It's my understanding that Mr. Dakota will speak with LRTA administrators to develop a response to the, to this particular issue. And then, the other issue was consistently late buses, morning buses from Pawtucketville, and again, Mr. Dakota will, in fact, have a discussion with the LRTA. The next issue, Your Honor, is a revisit of the Driver Education Program that we have here at Lowell High School. Several students have been, have brought to the attention to the school committee that they would, in fact, like Drivers Ed to be present at Lowell High School. We currently have no Drivers Ed program. Your Honor, if you, back when you and I were first serving, we had our own program here at the, at the high school. We then went to a contract-based program where we contracted with an individual. That didn't work out that well, and we decided not to have Driver Ed at all. Well, with the changes in insurance, and with the changes in the state law regarding young people needing to take Drivers Ed, students were asked, students asked the school committee if we could, in fact, create another Driver Ed program. There were some concerns, and Mr. Lang actually came up with a very good suggestion, and that suggestion is here, Your Honor. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty, to request that a representative of Lowell High School contact and offer classroom space to all interested in qualified driver education training programs. They would actually be able to provide their training programs right at Lowell High School. So, what we would do, Your Honor, is we would provide the classroom space, we would contact every available vendor, and we would say, come into the high school, advertise, and you can run your program at Lowell High School. Lowell High School's not directly involved in that. It only will provide classroom space, and that's it. So, we don't have to take out an insurance, we don't have to buy cars, we don't have to do any of that, and we also do not have a quote contractor. Now, Ms. Doherty and Ms. Martin were concerned about, how do we know which Driver Ed program is best? And the way we determined that was, it'll be word of mouth of the students, Your Honor. They will say, oh, Driver Ed School Smith is the best, because every kid who took the Smith Driver Ed Training Program passed in their first try. So, the ones that were not as effective would, in fact, be weeded out by the, by student, by student discussion. So, we would need to vote on that, Your Honor, to allow that.
And there wouldn't be any costs associated with the school department?
Absolutely.
We're just, I think that's a great idea to get the students involved.
Right.
And a quality driver education program.
Right. I mean, students would pay for the classes, but again,
Right.
Because you're going to have four or five different schools in one place, the cost is going to be very competitive. So, people are going to compete with the cost, they're going to want to keep it low, and it was an excellent suggestion offered by Mr. Lang. Again, we proved that three to nothing, but that, again, would need to, that is a policy change, and that would need to be agreed upon by the school committee.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Conway.
Yes.
On the motion? Any discussion?
Yes, second.
Second, okay. Roll call.
Well, just a quick question, just a clarification.
Yes, Mr. Conway.
Is that, that's definitely after school, is that correct?
Absolutely.
After school hours?
Absolutely.
Definitely. It's an excellent idea, to bring the Driver Ed to the students rather than the students go to them.
Yes.
Roll call.
Ms. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Coffield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number 11, I think we'll all be pleased to hear this. Mr. Dakota has just absolutely done yeoman's work, Your Honor. He conducted an audit of students riding this past fall. He determined that the current middle school length from home to school policy of 1.7 miles can be reduced to 1.5 miles at absolutely no increased cost to the public school system. So, what that means, Your Honor, is a couple of years ago, we increased the walker mileage to 1.75. Mr. Dakota did an audit. He learned that lots of youngsters get rides to school and don't want the transportation, so we're actually able to decrease the mileage back down to 1.5. And what that means, Your Honor, is lots more youngsters get to ride at absolutely no increased cost.
I like it.
That's, yeah, he did a good job. He did a very good job. So, that was agreed to, a motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, to actually reduce the mileage requirement for middle school students, for middle school students from 1.5 to 1.75 miles for the 2008, 2009 school year. Your Honor, again,
Yes.
That is a policy change,
Yes.
And we would need to vote on that.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr.?
Just a quick question. I don't mean to, I mean, I want to reduce it to one mile, but we're going to be, you know, we're talking millions of dollars here in terms of being in deficit. Before we make a policy change tonight, we might want to go through the budget process. I think Mr. Dakota, again, has come through and making major savings for us, but we need to, we may end up reversing it and going the other way. We don't really know what the final, the final numbers are from Chapter 70 or the local, unless you can clarify it, I don't.
Well, we did discuss that, Your Honor, and Ms. Doherty has just reminded me that we did discuss that, so, good insight, Mr. Leary. And we said the same thing, oh, let's wait to the budget, but the reality is, Your Honor, students need to know before the end of school, and students who are selecting new schools will need to know during the April school selection period. We're coming, in April, we're beginning to select new schools. I mean, that's when students will be changing schools, selecting schools, people coming from private schools to the Lowell Public Schools, so they will need to know, come the next school year, whether or not their youngster will be receiving transportation. So, that's why we need to do it now, rather than at the budget session. If, when Mr. Dakota was saying no increased cost, what he's saying is, it would not, would not in any way change our current contract. I mean, we have a contract with the bus company. It would not in any way increase that current contract.
Just, and I thank, just real quick, I'll be quick. I just, and Mr. Dakota I trust, because he's come through time and time again, but I'd hate to be sitting here in July and saying, we have no way to cut, but now we can go to bussing and save half a million dollars. I, yeoman's work yet again by Mr. Dakota, but you don't know what we're going to be sitting with here in July, what you're going to be looking at and cutting. I mean, really, I don't know, we really don't know.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. My understanding is that, in terms of the contract, is that we cannot cut any more buses. We're locked into this number of buses. What Mr. Dakota has been able to do is by really auditing the ridership on the buses, we're able to see that those students, we have, now have a form that says, your child is eligible for the bus. Is he going to take it? And the parent checks, no. So, now we know we can give that seat to another student. So, we, we really can't cut any more buses because we're locked into this contract. So, what he's done is, by using the same number of buses that we've already committed to in this multi-year contract, he's expanded the riders by being able to identify those students who aren't using the bus. So, I think it, there really is no way to save from that. What it's doing is getting those kids who are available to take the bus without costing us anymore. Thanks.
And I agree, because I counted the seats on those buses, 77 of them, and I like to see 77 youngsters on that bus.
Absolutely.
And if we can pick up youngsters who are going to walk an extra two tenths, three tenths of a mile, shame on us if we don't do that.
Right. That's what he's doing.
Do you know that they weren't taking the bus?
Right.
It's almost over. Preschool transportation costs, one of the things that this committee, the
Do we have to take a
Oh, sorry, we need to take a vote. Thank you, Your Honor.
A vote and a call.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante to, seconded by Mr. Leary. Will we take a roll call on the, on the motion that was just presented?
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Coffield.
Here, I mean, yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
The preschool, preschool transportation costs, Your Honor. Mr. Dakota notified the committee that in order to restore preschool transportation for the 2008, '09 school year, it would, it would cost approximately $475,000 into our budget. So, I guess that's a report of progress. No, no action needs to be taken. Snow removal at bus stops, Your Honor. Several members of this entire committee have talked about snow removal at bus stops. Mr. Dakota informed the school committee members that he's been working very closely with Brian Curley and TJ McCarthy, Assistant City Manager, and Tom Bellegarde, Parks and Recreation Commission, to finalize a snow removal policy plan for the city. The map outlines areas of responsibility that DPW, Parks, and School Department, and city residents are responsible for. So, now it's, so now it's, when you call the Parks Department, they can look at their area of responsibility and say, oh, yes, this is my responsibility. So, kudos again to Mr. Dakota to having done that for us. Again, Your Honor, the next item is a policy change. Mr. Dakota discussed with us a proposal to change the start and stop times of three specific schools. The first proposal is the McCalliff Elementary School. Now, you know, Your Honor, we're going to be taking the Varnum, and the students from the Varnum will be able to come into the McCalliff School. One of the concessions we wanted to make for parents of the Varnum School students was that there would be little if no disruption to their, to the fact that their school is closing. So, the first is to have the McCalliff Elementary School assume the start time of the Varnum School. Now, Your Honor, the current start time is 8:30 a.m., and we're going to move that back 40 minutes. Okay? The second issue would be the Rogers Middle School, and the proposed time change, currently they start at 8:30. We're going to move that back 10 minutes, Your Honor, and that's it, to 8:40 a.m. And the reason is, the amount of bridge closings throughout the city, and the, and the, and the lack of bridges that the buses are able to actually travel over is, creates a traffic problem, and so we need to actually move that start time about 10 minutes. And the last one, Your Honor, the third change is for the Shaughnessy Elementary School. They currently start at 9:00, and he's recommending that they start at 9:10. And again, it provides additional time for buses performing those runs to actually make it over the certain bridges, and also, there are going to be bridge closings throughout the city, so this is going to create some, again, traffic problems. So, in anticipation of some bridge closings, Mr. Dakota was recommending a 10-minute change to the Rogers and the Shaughnessy. Now, Your Honor, I recognize that there's a 40-minute time change to the McCalliff. We might want to have some discussion about that, but again, we tried to make it the most palatable for those Varnum School students
Okay.
that would be moving over to the McCalliff. Their school's closing, we wanted to, they were going to have the greatest impact because their school's closing, and that's why we asked for the time change that would actually, that would actually take effect at the McCalliff School.
Okay. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mia. I received a couple telephone calls from parents from the McCalliff School with their concerns of changing the time. It's been pointed out to me that this is the third change, major change, that they have had in the last five years. I mean, we're talking about somewhere in the vicinity of 425, 450 students. So, obviously, there's, it's a great impact on those parents with daycare. I mean, when we're talking about changing five or 10 minutes, I think that, that parents are certainly more than willing to, to back up the school system and to help out, especially if there's savings of money. However, if we're talking about 40 minutes, a 40-minute change, this, this is a, this is really a disruption to their, to their lives, because each and every one of these people, I'm sure, have daycare problems. They're going to have to go back to the employer. This is the third time in five years they've gone back to the employer and asked them, can you change my hours again, or I can't, I can't be in on time, or I'm going to have to get someone to watch my child for a couple hours while they're at work. So, I'm just wondering if there's, and I'm sure that the Transportation Coordinator has looked at this very carefully, but I'm wondering, is there any possibility that we could go back to the drawing board and take a look at that, that change on 40 minutes? It just seems like, it seems like quite a, quite a bit of a time change, and it's, and the impact, I think, is going to be devastating to those parents.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, and I think that the concerns that Mr. Conway is raising is certainly something that we talked about in the Subcommittee, and I don't think anyone has taken this on lightly in any way. You know, A, the idea of closing the Varnum is certainly something that we, we had hoped not to have to do until our new elementary school was ready, but the situation has demanded it. And I think that one of the key considerations in terms of the time shift at the McCalliff has been, again, transportation. Because our bussing system is set up on basically three time, time schedules, early, middle, and late start schools. early, middle, and, and late start schools, the whole is going to be in those late start schools. So, if we, if the McCalliff retained its, its current start and stop time, it would require purchasing another bus. We'd need to purchase another bus, we'd need to hire another bus driver, and that expense would be felt, you know, really, and would, would cut into the critical savings that we're, we're anticipating from closing the Varnum in the first place. I think that it is, and I certainly recognize the imposition on families, that daycare issues are huge, that trying to coordinate and, and, you know, work with employers to, to make these kinds of changes. I do not in any one way think that those aren't significant, because I know parents who, who struggle with it. But I do think that in, in terms of trying to ensure that, having been forced to make a difficult decision, the, the thought process was, we needed to make the most of it. If we were going to be closing this school and looking at roughly a million-dollar savings to cut into it by purchasing another bus, by, again, hiring another staff person simply to accommodate a time, a timeframe, didn't seem warranted by the, during our discussions in the subcommittee. But again, I think it is with regret and with concern that we do it. But in, in looking at the overall cost that we're willing to expend, we're really hoping to use that money in classrooms as opposed to on the streets of the city.
Anyone else, yes, Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you, Your Honor, to Assistant Superintendent Lang. How much is one bus? Forty-four thousand? Okay. Because I had a couple of concerns, as Mr. Conway did, because at the meeting, we said that we were trying to accommodate some of the Varnum School students, but then again, I looked at the numbers, and we've got 380 kids at the McCalliff and 184 at the Varnum. And this is a major change, so, tonight, I guess I'm not prepared to vote in favor of this. I would like to see if there were, is some sort of alternative. I understand the problems with the buses, with the bridges. But, you know, at the expense of these families, you know, why do we always put the burden on them again? Because, because our bridges aren't holding up and our roads or whatever. I don't think they should always have to bear the brunt of this, so. And I do respect the work that Mr. Dakota does. I'm sure he looked into this as, you know, he's very diligent in what he does, but there's, seems like there's got to be a better way. Forty minutes is a long time. Some of these parents, you know, they have gone back and forth to their employers. And people who are self-employed, you know, if you bring your kids there at 8:30, and now you have to bring them at, I lost my time here, but if you have to bring them after nine o'clock, I mean, that's a very short day. So, I, I would like to see if there's just any other way we could not have such an increase in time. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Just really, I really respect my colleagues and, and understanding that a forty minutes is, is a major impact. Conversely, another major impact is, we were looking at a deficit between three and four million dollars. Closing the Varnum School was nobody's choice. I mean, that's something we're going to have to vote on in the month of March to actually do. We're hoping that has $1.5 million in savings. It may not, it may only have one million. We're going to be making a lot of tough decisions in the next few months. Mr. Dakota has come to us time and time again with different alternatives, how to save costs. He has a whole blueprint right now of other ways to save costs that are even more challenging, but would actually help us save monies. I respect people, you know, I feel bad for people with a forty-minute change, it's huge. But the other decisions we're going to be making, because there's a $3 million deficit, is going to make this really, it's going to be pale in comparison to what we're going to be asked to be doing. So, I am prepared to vote on this. I don't want people to be impacted negatively, but I know what we're going to be facing in the next, you know, in the budget time is going to be gigantic, and we need to really look at ways of saving costs. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I have to say, I was struck by my colleague's comment earlier that the McCalliff has gone through several time changes in the last five years, and I, I feel horribly about that. I'm also someone who sits on the Transportation Subcommittee, and I feel that Mr. Dakota has worked these numbers. I mean, our goal is to provide efficient, safe transportation. And in order to have that third tier, we need to have that time change. I honestly, I'd love to be able to go back and, you know, say to Mr. Dakota, okay, throw the numbers out again, keep working it, but I don't think we have the time, because we need to move forward with letting families know, letting parents know, letting our staff know, if in fact, this time change is going to happen. So, my concern with, like, going back to the drawing board is, I don't know that there's much more that can be gained from that. I believe that Mr. Dakota has looked at the options, and that, as my colleague said earlier, we're facing a tight budget crunch. And I'd rather save the money on transportation and be able to keep it in the classroom and keep the teachers there and things like that, so. I, I, I think it's a difficult decision, but I feel that we have looked at those options. Thank you.
Conway?
Just, just a quick question. How many other schools will be affected forty minutes this year?
Through you, Your Honor. This is, well, this is the only change, this is the only school that we're making the change in. And again, just let me back up something that Ms. Doherty is saying. In April, parents come to the Parent Information Center to begin the process of selecting schools. So, again, that's why we're making the change now, because we need to, A, alert staff, B, alert parents. And the parents who are newcomers to our school system, they need to be alerted to the fact that this will be a time change in the school. So, when they're selecting the school, that might be a consideration for them. I recognize everything you're saying, Mr. Conway, it is difficult. But $44,000 does, does not compute in our budget right now if we want to make a third-tier transportation run. And it is difficult for the people at this school. And I recognize what Mr., what Mr. Leahy has indicated, about people who work and who have their own businesses. But I also recognize that we are trying to run the best efficient educational corporation that we can. And sometimes, it is just not, does not make everybody happy. And I don't like making the change, it's my neighborhood, but I recognize that in order to, for us to remain within a specific quota in our budget and transport, as you indicated, as many youngsters as possible, this is a highly, it was, it was, it was, it was discussed. We tossed it around, and we finally made a recommendation that we would come to this committee as a whole, and recommend it to the committee as a whole. Through you, Your Honor, I also believe that Mr. Lang, who was present at the meeting, may have some additional information to add. Your microphone, okay.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Just for a point of clarification, if we vote on this tonight, does it still go to, it says on another memo that this may have to be bargained?
Yes.
So, tonight, we'll vote for the change, but it's not definite?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
If I could, just, in terms of having to bargain it, it would be impact bargaining, so it would be a matter of us voting tonight, it is definite. And then we just, that's a, a union term that allows us to negotiate with them after a decision has already been made. So, voting tonight would be definitive. Just as another point, and perhaps as a way, I know in the past, and I'm thinking specifically of the Pine, when we had changed their time a number of years ago, we did kind of go out to one of our community partners and talk to them about starting a before-school program that allowed parents to take advantage of it. My understanding is that there was a rate reduction, or there was some, I'm going on memory now, it was a few years ago. But that might be a way to have one of our community partners come in to, to run a before-school program, especially at least in that first year, when parents may be struggling. My memory, again, is such that, I, I believe when we did that at the Pine, after a couple years, those, the students who had issues had kind of cycled out, and we were able to eliminate the, they, we didn't have the same need for a before-school program. It might be a way to take, take some of the edge off. I'm keep looking at you, Mr. Lang, sorry.
If I may, how many schools do we have in our system that start at 9:10?
Mr., that would be referred to Mr. Lang.
Shaughnessy, Shaughnessy starts at 9:10.
How many schools in our system start at 9:10? I believe it's on the back, Your Honor.
Quite a few schools? And when would this be implemented?
For the next school year, Your Honor.
The next school year?
Yes.
So, the parents would have ample time.
Yes.
With tremendous notice that there's a change. And Ms. Fattacante, you indicated, you report, there's a savings of $44,000.
Well, we wouldn't have, at, at a minimum, Your Honor, we would not have to hire another bus to operate within Tier Two. And as Mr. Lang indicated, we would then be able to, in, in, in the after-school section of Tier Two, where we have transportation now out to Cali Stadium, because we're going to make the time change, we actually might be able to have some cost savings in some of that transportation also. As he indicated, not a huge savings, but there would, it looks like there would be some savings there too.
I, I might add, if this was the only school that was going to be starting at 9:10, then I'd have difficulty supporting it. If it was going to be implemented next month, I, I couldn't support it. But saving $44,000, we must look at ways and means to educate our children and be cost-effective at the same time. So, you, you going to present a motion, we're going to take a roll call on this?
Motion, Your Honor, so that some of my, I think some of my colleagues might be in opposition, so I'll separate the motion, Your Honor. The first motion would be to have a time change at the McCalliff Elementary School. And the time change would be a time change of forty minutes, and the new start time would be at 9:10 a.m.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty, roll call.
Mr. Leahy.
No.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coffield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
No.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Four yays, three nays.
Motion carries. Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. There are two other schools, time change.
Mr. Leahy?
There were only two nays on that vote? I think you, the clerk said three nays, but.
Now, Mr. Leahy, you said no.
Yeah.
Mr. Conway said no, or Mr., you said yes, right?
Yeah, correct, I said yes.
You're right, you're right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're right.
Sorry, Your Honor.
Which down is no. Thank you.
The, the next one you're issue, Your Honor, is the Rogers Middle School and the Shaughnessy Elementary, a ten-minute time change to each of those schools.
I'm sorry, what's it, Rogers and what else?
The Rogers and the Shaughnessy. A ten-minute time change to each of those schools, Your Honor.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty. On the motion, any discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coffield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
There is one final item, Your Honor. Along with the first vote that we took, the school committee must take a vote to enter into impact bargaining with the unit, with the appropriate units. I make a motion that we enter into, that the lower school committee enter into impact bargaining with the appropriate units affected by these three schools.
Motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All favor the motion, signify by saying aye, we'll take a roll call.
Enter the report, Your Honor, thank you.
We'll take a roll call on that, that motion?
Who seconded it, I'm sorry, you're going too fast.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Going too fast for me, okay. Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coffield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, to accept the report as a report of progress and place the report on file. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The report has been accepted and placed on file. And I might add, to the viewing audience and everyone involved, you people do yeoman's work. You attended this meeting for two hours, and it was an excellent report as well. But most of the work on the school committee is done. It's subcommittees' tireless, tireless work, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Now, I have a report. I don't want to say, I don't want to hear any oohs and ahs. The mayor convened a meeting this evening. On the mayor's task force is Ms. Martin, Ms. Fattacante. And Anne Murphy was so gracious to give us a report. And it is on the schools, the school desegregation, school assignments, the waitlist procedures. Private and propoial students will stay on the waitlist until October 20th. After October 20th, that list, it stops. After October 20th, those students would be off the list. I'll just give you a quick summary of the report that Anne Murphy presented to us. One, all, all elementary schools had a waitlist except for the Washington. The Greenhills, McCalliff, Moody, Morrie, and Varnum had less than 15 students on the waitlist. The Beale, Bartlett Community Partnership, Lincoln, Mc Avenue, Potocavale Memorial, Pine Arts, Riley, and Shaughnessy had more than 15 students on the waitlist. The largest waitlist were grades K through one and two, more than 70 students. Greenhills, Morrie, and Merklin had 64% of their waitlist students living within the home district. Six, the Beale, Bartlett Community Partnership, the Lincoln, McCalliff, Mc Avenue, Moody, Potocavale Memorial, Pine Arts, Riley, and Shaughnessy had more than 65% of their waitlist students living outside the home district. Middle school waitlists, as of February 5th, 2008, all middle schools had a waitlist. The Bartlett Community Partnership, Butler, Robertson, Rogers, and St. Close had less than 15 students on the waitlist. Three, the Daley, Pine Arts, Sullivan, and Wang had more than 15 students on the waitlist. The largest waitlist were at grades five and six, more than 100 students. All middle schools had more than 55% of their waitlist students living outside the home district. The, the committee, by a motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin, unanimously supported the report presented by Anne Murphy, and it was a three yays, no yays. If there's anything else to offer, Anne, or anyone else who'd like to offer any input on this report?
I'd make a motion, Your Honor, that the motion that was recommended by the subcommittee be adopted by the full school committee.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of, yes, John?
I just had a comment before we voted.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. All right, I believe we needed to vote on this, so I wanted to make a comment. But I disagree with the waitlist procedures. I brought this motion up again after we had had a vote on it maybe a year or two ago. I didn't see any problems with anybody waiting. I didn't see the problem with if you're in a Catholic school. I didn't see the problem with if you're in a Catholic school, and you want to come into the private school, public schools, why the waitlist procedures would be different. My thinking is that all the students are from Lowell. It doesn't matter if you're in public school, or if you choose to go to a parochial school. If you, once you choose to register in Lowell for a public school, it didn't matter to me where you waited. And I disagree with the program. I think there's many reasons why students choose to go to a parochial school, why they decide to come to the public schools. A lot of kids go down to, to, a lot of parents go down to register their kids. They don't always get their first choice. They waited out at another school. What's the difference if they're at a public school or a parochial school? So I would strongly urge my colleagues to reconsider this, because I just don't believe that, you're a resident of Lowell, it doesn't matter where you're waiting to get your first choice. And it's not our decision to punish students that decide, you know, wherever they decide to wait, that's not up to us to decide where they should be on the waitlist. The waitlist is fair. If you come in and you're 10th on the list, you should be 10th on the list. I just, again, I strongly disagree with this procedure, and I think that all the kids should, once they're on the waitlist, they're on the waitlist. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Just, I agree with Mr. Leahy, I disagree with it as well, and I'll use just one quick example, is the Helnic American School, where the students, who, you know, many of them live in the city of Lowell, are leaving after 6th grade. The school only goes up to 6th grade. So why are they not afforded the opportunity to be on the waitlist for their 7th grade year in one of our middle schools? I agree, if you live in the city of Lowell, it really doesn't matter if you want to say Margaret's, you know, Immaculate, I think you should have the same exact ability to be on the waitlist as any other person in the public school. Their ta, their parents are taxpayers, and the schools are funded by the taxpayer. So I support Mr. Leahy on this particular initiative.
Any other discussion before we take a roll call vote? Motion by Ms. Fattackany to adopt the recommendation brought forward by the subcommittee, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Leahy.
No.
Mr. Leary.
No.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattackante.
Yes.
Five yeses, two nays, approved.
Okay, if we could have a report from the superintendent, Ms. Franco?
Yes.
On the quarterly report, a motion, surveys, survey of staff, parent information center reorganization, list of eligible teachers, personnel report.
Okay. I'd like to direct your attention to the quarterly report of the status of outstanding motions. The motions that are highlighted in yellow have been reviewed in subcommittee and have gone before the school committee for review. I'm seeking your approval to remove these motions in yellow from the quarterly report, except for number 56, which I changed earlier, because that was denied. And if there are any that you have questions about, if you could bring them to my attention, I'd appreciate it.
Any discussion on the quarterly reports or motions? If no discussion, except the report as amended earlier in the meeting by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway, accept the report and place it on file.
Excuse me, I did have one question on one of them. Through you, Your Honor, to Assistant Superintendent. Number 20, the Riley Boiler. It just says, it was reported 12:05:07. Wouldn't that fall under maybe, I don't want to take it off the agenda, wouldn't that fall under like, in progress, or work in progress, or something like that? Because the boiler is in need of replacement, it's just a matter of time. Right, because then we did make a motion as a whole to replace the boiler as soon as, so I just want to make sure that it doesn't get taken off the list as reported. Thank you.
I believe Manager Lynch and the DPW and his staff are working towards replacing that boiler. Am I right, Jay? Yeah, okay. Okay. Let us accept that report as the report, as amended report, signify by saying aye. Any repose? The report has been accepted. Now we'll move on to the survey of staff.
Yes, the next report you'll find is the TELS survey, which stands for Teaching, Learning, and, and, what's the last L? And Leading Survey. That's being administered to all educators in the Commonwealth. It's a confidential survey, be taking place now through March 7. And it will, it's being conducted by a collaborative group of practitioners in the state, business leaders, government officials, educators, who want to get true opinions by educators across the Commonwealth of, on a variety of, in a variety of areas. And so it will take these opinions, they'll process the information, we will get some information at the end of the school year, and then other additional district information in the fall. It also, this particular report also speaks to the fact that Ms. Martin thought ahead of the state and asked for information that was quite similar, and we wanted to know if this could be a replacement type information, or if it would fit the bill of what you had hoped for, Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I have to say, it, you know, clearly the governor's office is watching Lowell School Committee meetings. I think this is absolutely dead-on exactly what we were looking for, and I'm really very impressed, to the point that, I mean, every topic area that is mentioned in the motion is very clearly expressed in the backup documentation here, in terms of giving us information about the way teachers and educators feel about the way they, they work in their district, their opinions on professional development, which I think are critical, their, their opinions on school safety, on their ability to participate in important decision-making in districts. Absolutely critical items that we've been discussing, and that really were what drove my initial motion way back in October. They also have anticipated my biggest concern, which was the ability to do this as a web-based survey. So, thank you, Governor Patrick, because you have solved my biggest concern. I am extremely pleased to look at this. One, and I wouldn't recommend at this point doing it, I'm hoping that this will be an annual, an annual event, really, the opportunity and the ability to be able to fine-tune this for our own specific district needs. At this point, looking at it, I think there is a wealth of topic, of subject matter being covered within this survey. I can, however, anticipate that perhaps in the future, we would want to ask specific questions about our district from our teachers, so that we may be able to really personalize this statewide document, so that when we were getting final information, we'd be able to garner information specific to our district. Again, at this point, I think we do need to live through it. It is, I think, really wonderfully comprehensive, and I think is really going to give us some really critically important insights as to the way not only teachers, but also our administrators, principals, really are, their, their opinions of what's going on in our district, and I think it will be extremely instructive, pardon the pun, and educational for all of us, so thank you.
Any other discussion on that report? Accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, place it on file. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Report has been accepted and placed on file. Next agenda, parent information center.
Yep, reorganization.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the reorganization of the Parent Information Center is a process that many of the committee members know about. The following report contains the details up to date, that is really working on the initiative of taking the Parent Information Center as it exists, moving forward to become a family resource center. And the plan is updated under the direction of Assistant Superintendent Ian Murphy, talking about right now, the cross-training that's going on in Parent Information Center. So for the first goal of this particular year to be, that a parent comes into Parent Information Center, and it's like one shop, stop shopping, where they would have their transportation, their registration, and their lunch process as a first step. And there are also other details as what in fact is being sought out to achieve through this whole process. And if you would like any more details about this specific initiative, I'm sure Assistant Superintendent Murphy can ask. Answer any question you may have.
Mr. Leary?
No questions, but I just want to say, this is, this is really fantastic. This is a reorganization that actually derives from business sense, that serves the customers, the parents. I think this is something that Assistant Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent working on this, when I first became on the school committee, I had discussions with Dr. Bear regarding this. And actually, this is, this is something that I think is going to be really a benefit, it isn't going to cost any additional money, and it's going to, you know, provide quality service to people who, who when you bring your child for education, this is something that's huge. This is one of the most important things you're ever going to do. And more importantly, this is the face of the school system. You know, if it's something that's a poor representation of what we're trying to do, or if it's, if it's not working efficiently, it's going to affect negatively on us. I think this is something, I'm very happy, and I want to congratulate the Assistant Superintendent Murph for doing a fantastic job with this. And I want to thank Dr. Bear as well, because this is, this is really good. I'm really, I'm exactly surprised, not surprised, I'm actually encouraged by this fantastic reorganization. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bear. Yeah, and I have to echo those same sentiments, I'm really extremely pleased. I think some of the critical aspects of this, certainly the one-stop approach to this, I think makes absolute perfect sense. The idea of cross-training staff so that they can speak intelligently and be able to service customers on, on all the areas, all the different topics that come up as, as parents come into our Parent Information Center. Couple other points that I would like to pay particular attention to, the idea of being able to incorporate new technologies, being able to have a kiosk for those families who, who are, you know, able to kind of come in, take themselves through the process, also having it have additional languages as part of that, I think is really wonderful, that it will broaden our, our ability to serve, serve families. And one of the key things I have to say, and it's something that, you know, I talk about a lot from the community service side of things, the idea of being able to incorporate into this Parent Information Center, opportunities and information about health and wellness programming for their students, about a dental program that goes on here in our city, about the different social services and other services, that really allow us to holistically approach a family and be able to provide them with what they need, because at the end of the day, that is what will make a student successful. And it's the ability of this district to be able to kind of wrap those services around this, this individual student and this family, in a very, I think, effective and proactive way, as they walk through our door. It really is, I think, going to have an extraordinary impact. I realize this is a first step, but I'm extremely heartened by it, and I think it shows really, it's very clear in its vision for the future, and that I find extremely exciting. Thank you.
Ms. Fattackany?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, again, wanted to say kudos to the people who put this report together and who are going to make these changes. This is the face of the Lowell school system. This is the first encounter that a parent has when they walk through the door. It should be as easy and accessible as possible, and these changes make it so. A parent know, a parent can, one-stop shopping, I am so, so in agreement with the one-stop shopping, because it just makes the whole experience for the parent so much easier, and the parent then comes away with thinking, man, that wasn't so bad at all. And that's how they will then approach the Lowell school system from there on in. So kudos to the people who, who put together this reorganization, it's excellent, thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to Assistant Superintendent, I'm getting all the, right, I know. Any timeline on this, I was just wondering? Okay, that was my question. The report has a lot of information in it, and it was a good motion by my colleague, Mr. Leary, and great report. But I was just curious on, you know, like you said, the change in the office around, or the, and then the name would change eventually, too, then, right? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this report? Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, to accept the report as a report of progress, place it on file. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The report is accepted and placed on file, and I might add, as hard as the school committee worked throughout the school year and the subcommittee meetings, there's a lot of people behind the scenes doing an awful lot of typing, so. And I might add, there's an awful lot of trees that have been sacrificed as well. List of eligible teachers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, here is the most current list of eligible teachers in February for your approval.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Excuse me?
Move approval to accept the list.
Move approval by Ms. Fattackany to accept the list, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The list has been accepted, recorded, and placed on file.
Personnel.
Personnel report.
The next report is the personnel report. Also, if you would approve the most current personnel report, which has our most recent upcoming retirements and resignations today.
Move approval by Ms. Martin to accept the report as a report of progress, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Report has been accepted and placed on file. And on the new business?
We already took care of that, Your Honor.
Excuse me?
We already took care of the new business.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Convention and conference request.
Take them in the entirety, Your Honor, move approval.
Excuse me?
Move approval to take them in the entirety.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Fattackany, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, to accept the three requests all at once. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Roll call.
Aye.
Roll call.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattackante.
Yes.
Seven yeses, approved.
Do we have any other discussions? I, I just want to add, this has been an excellent meeting. I, I enjoy it very much, and I also want to applaud and commend all the hard work that goes on behind the scenes. I'm not at those subcommittee meetings, but it was very evident here tonight, there's a lot of work that's been done. Before we adjourn, I attended, matter of fact, I was a judge at the Lowell High School presentation of their American Idol. There were 26 acts on that stage, and I just fell in love with every one of them. They were excellent. The entertainment was marvelous, and I think Mr. Samaras has hit a home run here. And I discussed it with them earlier that evening. I said, if every school in the Memmack Valley had this idol contest, then they all come together down at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium for the grand finale, it'd be a tremendous positive thing for every school. And there was over 800 people in that auditorium last, was it last Thursday night or? Last Thursday night. It was wonderful. And I was so honored to be asked to judge. But the kids were just so up for this talent show. And you get some wonderful kids in this city, wonderful. And with excellent talent as well. And they had to work hard. And I want to thank all the business leaders who supported this program with their financial contributions. So with that said, I'm looking forward to the next show and the next show. Jean Frankel, thank you so much for filling in. We didn't skip a beat. And Anne Murphy and Jay Lang, anything else to say?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Jackie Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. Thank you.